Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Due to some reviewing, it does not appear that when I keep my microphone off, the audio can be heard from anyone on the stream, so I'm going to keep my microphone on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. All right, the first case on our agenda this evening is an informal review. This is case PID 273-0104493, Metro Place, and 21156 INF informal review. This application is a request for an informal review and feedback for the construction of two four-story multifamily buildings consisting of 265 units, including amenity spaces and associated site improvements within the context of a framework plan. The 27.48 acre site is zoned office, laboratory, and research district, and planned unit development, Waterford Village, and is located southwest of Metro Place, approximately 2,400 feet west of the intersection with France Road. Ms. Martin, welcome this evening, and I will turn the time over to you for our case presentation.
Wonderful. Let's see if we can make all this technology work tonight. I'm too tall for this. Okay, perfect. Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This evening, we have a request before you for informal review. This project was previously considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission, although revisions are being presented tonight in alignment with the discussion that previously took place. I'll be presenting this case on behalf of Chase Ridge. So as you may recall, the site is located south of Metro Place South and is located within the Metro Place or Metro Business District, as well as the Blazer Research District. There are two sites that are under consideration this evening. The original site highlighted here in a star, as well as a potential future development site highlighted in yellow without a star. So you'll notice both the staff report, as well as the presentation this evening, are framed in the context of Phase One and a future phase. So in response to the Planning and Zoning Commission's discussion, the applicant has provided a conceptual framework plan as well as phasing. This depicts how Phase One, which is a residential multifamily development, is in proximity to potential future development, as well as connected to greenways, including the larger park network in Dublin. So this proposed plan conceptually provides vehicular access from Metro Place South to Blazer Parkway and establishes a grid in which future development could occur in an orderly manner. So with the understanding that the applicant has provided the framework plan requested, it's important to understand what the community plan recommendations are for the site, as well as some of the modifications to the proposal. So also, as you'll recall, this is within the Dublin Corporate Area Planning Special Area Plan geography. Even though it has a variety of existing zoning classifications, in order to facilitate this development, it is proposed to be rezoned to planned unit development. And the community plan is the primary guiding document that allows the staff, Planning Commission, as well as City Council to make consistent land use recommendations as we advance. So the de-cap plan is a little nuanced in that it highlights specific development sites for opportunity. This is really because the city is interested in leveraging these sites and reinvigorating some of our legacy office areas. So the sites under consideration tonight are identified as Sites Seven and Site Six. So these have an additional level of detail beyond the future land use recommendations, which are MUR One and MUR Two. So Site Seven is recommended for a variety of things: office development, high-density multifamily, as well as opportunities for hospitality uses. The intent here is really to get some height along the highway, but also complement the surrounding office buildings to make sure that there is activity really 24 hours a day. Site Six, also highlighted here, is intended to support surrounding office and technology uses, similar to the office laboratory and research uses that are in the area. Residential could potentially be part of Site Six, but would be in a supporting fashion with similar height and density that is targeted. And of course, as with any new development, we're looking to prioritize both pedestrian and vehicular connectivity and emphasize the quality and character of green space and greenways through the city. So the applicant has provided the surrounding development character for context. So you'll see to the north, there's an existing nine-story building, which has a very traditional office form, as well as two smaller four-story buildings that are equally traditional in nature and contain architectural fenestrations that are pretty typical of the time that Metro Center was built. The site is adjacent to I-270, so you do have that frontage on the west. Okay, and so the Phase One proposed site plan is very important to gain the commission's feedback on in terms of the site layout, combination of uses, as well as development character. But we're also asking you to consider this development within the context of their framework. So the proposal is for two four-story multifamily buildings, which is consistent with the previous time. They'll contain approximately 265 units, resulting in a density of 21 dwelling units to the acre on that Phase One site. You'll notice that's less than is contemplated in the community plan, which is 30 dwelling units to the acre. Surface parking is proposed on all four sides of the building, including adjacent to I-270, with a private amenity space located centrally. Open spaces, as well as recreation areas, have been integrated for both active and passive open space opportunities and to build on the existing Smiley Park. The applicant has revised the architectural character of the proposal and is now proposing a brick in lieu of semiticious siding and heart and other products. And Nietzsche-ha simulated wood panel is consistent with the previous proposal, as well as the landscape inspiration. So staff has identified a number of discussion questions for the commission's consideration. And first, understanding the context now of the framework, could the commission be supportive of Phase One based on the community plan, as well as the surrounding context? Does the Planning Commission, based on the additional information provided, support the conceptual site layout, including building, parking, and open space locations? Is the commission supportive of the mass scale, character, and height of the multifamily buildings, as well as the revised architectural materials? And then finally, is the commission supportive of the conceptual development framework for the future phase? And so really, the first four questions are intended to look at the primary development proposal in the context of a greater picture, whereas the fifth question is intended to provide some feedback at the most formative stages of planning to the applicant for the future phase. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Our applicant team is also here as well this evening, Pazuti, as well as MKSK, and they do have a presentation for you tonight.
Thank you very much. All right, looking to the commission for questions for staff at this point in time. Any questions?
I have one. I have one. When we rezoned this area, the special zoning, staff kind of sold the zoning based on the fact that the people that were in the current office buildings were starving for amenities like restaurants and health spas and things that would keep them from driving somewhere. Okay, well, all we're, I think, I don't, I'm not condemning this project, but I'm saying it seems like the timing is off. All we're going to do now is put more people there, and we still don't have the amenities, okay? It doesn't solve the problem with the empty office buildings because people have to drive places and there's nothing available around them. And I thought that we were going to get mixed use first. I thought that was going to be, was going to be something that was looked at immediately, the first part of the zoning, to get restaurants and so on to solve that problem. It seems like all we're doing now is exasperating the problem by putting more people there with no amenities.
Yeah. Yet certainly appreciate that. I think you hit the nail on the head. The intent of the de-cap special area plan really is to reinvigorate this legacy office space within the city of Dublin, particularly in the light of the COVID-19 pandemic and the ways people are working are shifting. And so to remain competitive as a municipality, we need to kind of retool how we think about some of these established areas in the city. So the de-cap plan was actually, you know, very well timed, in some cases ahead of its time, to provide a framework to catalyze development within the area. And so that is a mix of development types, and it's always kind of the chicken or the egg, right, which comes first? Is it the people or the restaurants? And I think typically, you have to have the people to support the restaurants and to create, you know, 24 hours of vitality and community and weekend vitality, because this is one of the quietest places in Dublin on the weekend. So that's really what this is striving for. I think Jenny can provide a little bit more detail on the zoning or future land use recommendations, if you'd like to talk through that, but that's the general intent.
So Ms. Roush, can you talk through the timeline and the community plan that has been made it through Planning and Zoning Commission and through City Council in respect to this particular area?
Yeah, no, this is good, and this is good timing. So as Nikki mentioned, you know, de-cap in its original form was approved in 2018. We have had some recent efforts of the Community Development Committee, as well as some representatives of property owners that are in the inner loop of Metro. So this is sort of on the outer loop. They've been engaged, Pazuti's been engaged as part of those conversations, but focusing on that inner loop, particularly along France Road, and what can be done particularly to help look at the branding of that? What are the uses? What is the mix? What's appropriate for that? And the Community Development Committee is actually making a recommendation to City Council related to the inner loop parcels and the de-cap plan making some amendments to that that look at all those things. So what does that want to grow up to be? How do we have the opportunity to leverage all the great opportunities here in terms of redevelopment and mix of uses, including housing and service, as well as office, open space, connectivity, all of those pieces? So the intent for that, which again is on the inner part, but ultimately relates back to all of Metro and how that fits together, as I mentioned, is being introduced to council on Monday and then would have a second reading in February. And following that, if council would approve those amendments, then the code, we would update the code that would have more robust requirements and guidelines to help guide this area. But it doesn't speak specifically to this particular site, but it's all part of that same conversation.
So can you speak to that inner loop? I imagine documents have already been published at the meetings on Monday. Can you speak to what the proposal is in front of the City Council as far as those recommendations?
Sure. So it's looking at, again, the inner loop parcels and what would infill opportunities look like versus a complete redevelopment of that? If there could be a catalytic project along with that France Road frontage, particularly the Max and Irma's graders, Fifth Third area, as again, that's sort of the part that you see the most and some potential opportunities and synergy there, as well as then opportunity in the inner loop if there's interest for redevelopment. So it includes, and we can forward that to the commission too for your reference. I think that would be definitely helpful for you to see the thinking of the council's Community Development Committee and how, and the recommendations of that, looking at building heights being along France Road and how those relate to and provide opportunity for mix of uses and more presence along the street, not mimicking Bridge Street, but the idea of, you know, having more density and intensity that helps support all the things that, you know, could and should go into this metro area.
Thank you for that clarity.
Yeah.
All right, and commission, as we are looking informal review, so that that's the stage that we're in, do we have any other questions for staff at this time? All right, do we have the applicant here who'd like to make a statement or a presentation this evening? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you. Jim Russell with the Pazuti Companies Executive Vice President, 629 North High Street, Columbus, 43215. I was part of the original meeting, came in at the end kind of to talk through a little bit and address some of the questions. And we're very excited about being here again tonight to try to open up and get a little bit more feedback. I think one of the things I had mentioned before, I've been at the Pazuti Companies for 24 years, and for 24 years, we have tried our darndest to market this site. We've developed three of the other adjacent office buildings, and it's really been a challenge to that site. While it has great visibility, you know, it's a narrow throat going back. It's a different feel for folks who are trying to bring more office added to an already abundance of available office space. And as we started looking at other options for the site, understanding, and our architects will talk a little bit more about some of the site constraints that we have on that piece, we were very excited when the city had started advancing discussions on how do you breathe life into this area that we've all invested time and money in. And one of the things that we found, and this is kind of tradition, we can have a great desire to do a lot of things and to do beautiful projects that bring in a lot of people, but at the end of the day, we still have to function within a market. And the market determines a lot of what we do, where we can invest money, where people will want to end up living and working. And you've experienced that history in Metro Center, where you had high occupancy and a lot of people, and you had the restaurants, and you had the amenities, and they left, which is a telling story about how do you change and evolve with the market? And what we're seeing more these days is that people want to live closer to where they work. They want to have things walkable and have that connection, have that respite of area where you can go and it's green and it's connective and it's active. And so how do you bring that into an established office park that's older? And so the efforts that the city is making, really, they're tremendous because not everybody's doing it in central Ohio. They're hoping and they're praying that tenants are going to come, and that's just not the market that we have. So this opportunity to take a piece of property, and we really appreciated the comment about adding some density and provide some of that connection because it creates its own little area that really provides that in-and-out traffic that the businesses will need to kind of bring that new life that you're looking for. So we think it's a great approach. Obviously, we wouldn't be here advancing if we didn't think it would work. But it is a challenge. I think Nikki had mentioned it's the chicken or the egg, and a mix of use means you need a mix. And we're willing to take the chance on bringing residential into an area that may not traditionally have been residential because we think it fits in the marketplace. So again, we're really excited about getting some feedback. We have now advanced some of the acquisition of the adjacent property that we talked about. That was some direction that we got from staff as well to see how do we make it better? How do we provide better connections to that green space? Make it feel like it is a part of the development, not stuck in the development, which is very important to all of us. So again, we're really excited about getting some feedback. And hopefully tonight, what we really want to do is we'll be able to continue advancing it and continue to make the investment in the architectural development and the other information that we all need to make sure it's a viable project. So your direction gives us a little bit more comfort that we can continue to spend a little bit money on the project to make it right. So that's all I'm going to say, unless there's some other questions. And again, we'll let you go through some of the changes that we've made to the project.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any questions for Mr. Russell at this time? Yes, Mr. Schneer.
Were you going to speak as well?
Oh, no, no.
He's going to do the bulk of the work, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just out of curiosity, is the architectural design that you came up with, is that what you would want, or is that what you think we want? Or, well, maybe there's a third. It's what you think is best, it's what you think we want, or it's what you think most complements the development? And where I'm going is, did you explore something that would be, you know, very different and decided, no, that won't work because?
That's a great question, Commissioner. I'm not sure I've ever been asked that question as bluntly as, are you trying to please us or please the market? And I will tell you, our approach is, if it's not going to work both financially and in the market for the customers that we need, then we wouldn't just propose it because we think we can get it passed and then flip it to another developer to do. We take pride in how things look and feel and interact and connect. And one of the challenges here is how do you pay attention to the surrounding buildings? And you have nine stories, four stories, in green space and open space that will never be developed because of the gas line. So how do you really incorporate those things? And create, what we try to do is to create that oasis of a place where people want to live. And with changes in the marketplace, they want to live and work, so they can work out of their office, and you can collect their income packs. But when they're done working, they can walk out and feel a sense of place. And so I think where we are advancing the architecture, because I think we're not quite there yet. I think we want to be comfortable that we're going to get there. But it's to find something that has a unique feel. It fits within the neighborhood, the adjacent building, so people don't feel like they're out of place. They need to feel like it's their home. And I think there's still some tweaks to make. We wanted to take advantage of the views. You're going to look over 270, and you're going to see green. You're going to be adjacent to green. And so there's some opportunities really to create that little oasis that's hidden but connected. So I'll say we would love to please you, but we'd like to please you with the project that really is going to work with architecture that we think fits the market. And that's where we're hopefully going to be heading with you.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Great.
Good evening, commissioners. Jeff Pongonas from MKSK Principal. You've said a lot so far. A great description, and I think along with Jim's description, we've heard a lot about their wishes and dreams aligning with what you see in the corporate area plan. So I have about 10 or so slides here, and I'd like to focus on either what you're interested in, or I'll just hit the highlights. So please stop me along the way. What you see on the screen right now is showing the sort of size and scale location of the two sites that we're talking about. There are Sites Six and Seven in the corporate area plan, sort of sitting right in the middle of the study area. We feel that, you know, there are a few things that we can do to best align with the corporate area plan. One is the residential use, which is to say that adding some density, some diversity of land use can invigorate a single-use office park like this. And on top of that, creating a series of connectivity opportunities, both in roadways, in sidewalks, trails, pedestrian connections, and also making a meaningful connection to the sort of Greenway, Cosbury Ditch, Smiley Park, that runs east-west through the site. Next slide. So again, this is sort of hinting at, or illustrating slides from the corporate area plan. On the right, you see those sites again. On the left, you see what we think is, you know, an opportunity for a great connection. So our sites are shown in red there, but the two arrows that you see, one running east-west over the highway and one running north-south from Blazer to Metro, is really illustrating something straight out of your plan, which is to say it would be great to connect those two roadways for both automobiles and pedestrians. We think that's a great philosophical approach. Whether it hits straight through, like that north-south arrow is shown, or wiggles through the site, like we'll illustrate in sort of a today condition, we think that's quite possible. So here's just a little bit of context illustrating where we were on the Phase One project and starting to think about the adjacency of that site with the asterix in it. You can see Smiley Park, you can see the east-west ditch, et cetera. So this is really us starting to feel like, wow, there's a great opportunity to start to build a connected neighborhood, leverage the infrastructure, leverage the lush landscapes, leverage everything that's been here for a while, build on that single use, and try to create some density and diversity. Better illustrating that Greenway opportunity. So what we'd like to do is connect your great landscape and regional green assets out to the public streets, out to Metro, out to Blazer, and have it be a focal point, not just for these two projects that we're here to talk about today, but for the entire Metro Place area, for the entire corporate area. So what we want to do is sort of daylight that east-west Greenway down to our public streets, public sidewalks, or trail connections so that it's more accessible and is seen as an amenity to people that live in and around, live and work in and around the neighborhood. This just further illustrates kind of the single-use nature, right? Blue office, yellow hospitality, and red residential. So again, density and diversity can help to reinvigorate and add a 24-hour So again, density and diversity can help to reinvigorate and add a 24-hour life to a place. And I think, Mr. Fishman, you commented, you know, what comes first? The, the spa and the restaurants? Or, you know, what are we here to talk about? And I think I'd suggest that a lot of times what we find in, in planning work is that, you know, retail and those great amenities, sometimes that's kind of the cherry on the sundae, that comes last. So, you know, once we've got bodies there during the day, folks working from nine to five, and then folks living there, you know, off those hours, that's the opportunity to have 24-hour life on that site, which can provide the demand to support those restaurants or retailers. So it is a little bit of chicken and egg, and we're always, as, you know, planners and civic leaders, impatient that we can't get the amenity first. But I think adding density to a site can help to plant the seed for the market calling for those types of uses. Okay, so here's an example of a framework plan, and by example, I mean, you know, Phase One, we've done plenty of planning there, you've seen the site plan, we've got great connection from Metro Place South. We're doing our best to create a Parkway down to that site and create a street-like environment in front of the Phase One building. And in this case, we're illustrating how you would connect down to Blazer Parkway and start to create what might be a road grid, a street grid, a walkable neighborhood that's connected to those public streets and also connected up to that Greenway system, so that you have the makings of a, a rich neighborhood, jobs, residential, green space, et cetera. One example of what that might look like, and here's just a little bit more detail, sort of the yellow filling in the blanks where development might go. That road pattern could take all sorts of different directions, shapes, and whatnot. What's important to us is that we make that connection to Metro and Blazer and have enough capacity or room on that site to create that walkable environment. This is a slide illustrating a little bit more detail about Phase One, and I just want to point out some of the constraints on the site, so you understand the site plan a little bit. So yellow on the site is illustrating some overhead electric lines. They actually continue east-west a bit. And in orange, that bar running east-west is a gas line underground. So you can see we've placed the building north of those infrastructure components and parking, stormwater, and some of the open space south of it. So we're trying to leverage the site as much as we can, you know, sort of balance parking with open space, with unit count, et cetera. So we're trying to use the site as efficiently as possible to create a neighborhood environment. It's a small detail, but I think it's worth noting. Our main drive that comes in from the north and, and heads south down to the Phase Two site, it's designed not as a parking lot with head-in parking on both sides, but a street that has head, I'm sorry, parallel on-street parking. So you get the feel that this is a street, you're not on another driveway that's leading you into, into a parking lot. So to the best of our ability for the shape of this flag lot, we've created what we think is a front door on a street address. Likewise, other things here to make mention of are the, again, Cosgrade Ditch and the floodway components that is, has along with it, and then the sort of green space and recreational amenities that would be planned in that green open space. You'll see a little bit more detail of that here on the next plan. Just a little bit more detail, this is where we are today from a site planning perspective. You can imagine the interior courtyards are very rich and robust, amenities, pool, et cetera. And the exterior of the site is landscaped quite well, and we feel connected nicely down to that Phase Two site and also to the east-west Greenway corridor. And you'll find in that open space for residents, you know, play space, lawn, sports, dog park, places to walk and get out into nature a little bit and connect up with that rich landscape that exists today. So I would pass that off to Liz to talk a little bit about architecture, unless there are some framework questions that you want to chat about before we pass it on.
Looking to the question.
Or we can hold questions till the end, whatever you prefer.
Let's hold questions, actually, and do them collectively.
Liz Meso, Senior Designer, MA Architects, 775 Yard Street, Columbus, Ohio. So a lot of the kind of big, big idea for the design, Jim actually already touched on. So the site by design is, has a long-throat entrance, and we've leveraged that to really think about this as a hidden oasis. And with the architectural materials, you know, we're, for the primary material, we're looking at masonry, something that wears time-honored material. And then also with the secondary material, looking at a woodlook fiber cement panel to help embrace that landscape element, which is really central to the whole design concept. So a warm and welcoming sense of place as you arrive. And if you, I don't know if you're able to go back to the site plan? Thank you. Yeah. So again, from a massing perspective, we have two buildings, simple block forms which do relate to the adjacent office buildings. And the biggest asset here is really this expansive, hidden garden, if you will, in the center, which is almost an acre. And it's not gated, it's, it's open at the entrance and then also opens up to the south and really sets up a strong connection with the amenities along Cosgrade Ditch. You know, the stormwater retention, it's not just for that, but we really see it as a water feature and an asset with the shared-use path around it. And a lot of the trail network, you know, would be great for residents of the building, but also, you know, the office, folks working in the office nearby. So that's, that's sort of the big concept with that. You know, in terms of density, because of the gas and electric easement, if you look at the sort of buildable area, which is roughly 8.6 acres, our density is 31 units per acre. I know if, if you factor the entire site, which is, I think, 12.6 acres, that's the, I think, 20, 20 units per acre that Nikki mentioned earlier. So, you know, with the floodplain and the easement, you know, those are limiting factors, and, and we found the best use of that area, to Jeff's point, was these recreation spaces and parking. And I think that about sums it up, so we're excited to hear your feedback.
At this time, Commissioner, we'll take questions for either staff or the applicant. Any discussion? I, oh, sorry, any questions at this time?
Question.
Question. Did, did you consider a taller building with more units?
I don't know if you guys want to field that question?
Welcome back, Mr. Russell.
Thank you. Yeah, we certainly did, and interesting, again, our history in Dublin, we really appreciated the fact that the city was asking us to go bigger and taller, and that's refreshing, again, trying to, to meet the goals of, of the plan. Part of the challenges, we looked at, we looked at nine stories, 10 stories, trying to bring it up and do something on a podium, and the, the economics just didn't work. Part of the parking issues, we did reach out at the encouragement of staff with adjacent property owners, trying to see if we could work some shared parking arrangements, things to be able to allow greater density, and just, we were not able to do that. They, no one wanted to kind of share in the parking. So we did explore it economically, it just wasn't going to make sense for us to be able to handle all that on-site. So what we wanted to do is to try to then go to as tall as we could, which would help us afford and be able to, to build it, but also keep in context. So the adjacent four-story buildings, we were able to bring it up to four stories, still park it and provide the amenities. But we did explore that. Trust me, if we had an opportunity to do something larger, it would mean more money for us, we would do it. So it was really a, a product of the market, the cost in the site.
And the event, again, just questions. You mentioned podium building, so you did investigate elevating the building and parking under the building to meet the requirements of residential?
Every option that we could look at to make that height, you know, you have the nine-story building directly north, so you have an opportunity for that to fit in. But then you also have to consider that going too tall now shadows over the four-story buildings that you have directly to the east. So it's finding that blend. And so the change in the elevation that we did in the buildings makes it at least feel complimentary to what's coming from the east into the site and the adjacent buildings there. But we did most definitely explore that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any final questions? Mr. Schneer.
Follow-up on, on your parking comment. Is the, the determination of the number of parking spaces, is that driven by code or by market? Because it, if hypothetically, if we were to permit fewer parking places, would that cause you to rethink whether you could go higher or not?
Yeah. It is typically, we would look at the market driving that. We, we know we have to meet code requirements, but in a place where we either are not anticipating the same number of vehicle count just because of the unit mix, you know, sometimes we'll count beds more than we will call square footage. But in this case, because you really have a lack of, of adjacent parking that's available, people in, in this level, at this, what we'll say, a luxury level or the price points, they don't want to park too far away, so trying to keep it condensed, keep it fitting, using that site that is broken up by the power lines and the gas lines in the creek, it just wasn't feasible. We don't think it's feasible to lower the count, make it attractive, and then be able to go higher. So I think in this case, it's more the market and the site.
If, if you're marketing it as a luxury project, none of the parking is under, is covered, though, is it? Tall surface?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
It's the trade-off of quality and how far away that you, you make it.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Fishman.
Yeah, I, I was, my comments in the previous meeting, I, I'm not enthused about it being so close to the, you know, visually to the highway. And if you had podium parking, same amount of units, you could have much more open space. And, and we love open space, you know, and, and green space rather than having the parking, you know, so prevalent. It seems like podium parking, if I was renting an apartment, I'd rather be inside under a building than outside on a parking lot for, for all kinds of reasons.
Right. And, and again, it's still, it's a cost factor in trying to get market rents as well, so we'd rather put the money into the quality of the product itself and not cheapen the construction and the finishes in order to get the density. And it is a, it is a trade-off, but we did, we explored every option. And, and I think here in the plan that we have, we've incorporated an awful lot of green space and connections. So I, I think we meet that, that requirement and that, that general connection that you want to make. I think it shouldn't be lost on what's going on with Cosgrade, and to be able to provide those connections into that park system for the office park, for the residential, and for new development that would, would occur, I think those connections become important. So we've tried to accomplish as much as we can. It's a balance. It's, it's a balance with meeting, is it parking, is it quality, is it height, is it density? At the end of the day, it's also about rents, and, you know, we're competing with Bridge Park and what's there, with a whole lot of other subsidy that's gone into that to make it work. And here, we're trying to do what we can from a pure market standpoint, and, and it's a challenge. And we also have to, I think I had mentioned before, you know, we have 20-some years of carry on that property, and so it makes it harder to get the economics to work because every year it costs us tax dollars and maintenance and upkeep, so it's kind of a hole that keeps going. So we'd love to be able to develop and move it forward and get it on the tax rolls at a much higher level than the vacant land.
Yeah, I, I just think that we don't want another Bridge Park there, but we, we want, I think that people around there, and it is kind of the, one of the entrances of the city, that we want as much green space. And I think that parking under the building, I, I said, I can't deal with your economics, but I'd be much more in favor of having a lot that's parking hidden.
Commissioner, that's an interesting comment, because when we talk about you don't want another Bridge Park, but at the same time, when we talk about, do you go nine stories? Do you increase the density? I mean, that, that becomes a Bridge Park. And so trying to find a mix where I think if you look at the green space and the connections and the open space here, it's way greater than you have in some of those other developments. So, so it is a mix, it is a challenge. And I think what's unique about this site, quite frankly, is people want to have choices. And so there is, there, there's a group of folks who want to live in Bridge Park, want that activity, they want to be in that action. But there are also people who want to live near Bridge Park but not go home to Bridge Park, and they want to be able to go to a place that is quieter in the evening, that does have that green space and does have that connections. And, and this site really provides that. And if you think through, there are very few sites that can, can offer that out. We're doing a project, a couple of projects. We have multifamily in the short north, which is that here you're in the active part of the Arts District. And then we have a project, a multifamily project that we built on Topiary Park near the main library. And you have residents who say, I can go to the short north when I want, but I'm, when I'm coming home, it's a quieter, more tranquil location, so I get to take advantage of both. And I think that's part of the, the catalytic impact that you're trying to get over here in the, in the Legacy Park is, let's create a place where people want to come back after work or work from, and it becomes where they land instead of leaving. And I think that's part of what was the challenge before, is to attract those other users and the other retailers and opportunities that you want. I think providing folks who are staying there become an important element. We did a project in partnership with the City of Grove City where they had land behind City Hall, right in the heart of, of downtown, and, and we put 200 units of multifamily behind that. And, and the idea behind it was now, instead of finding additional parking, it was all parked. People come there in the evening, they're staying there, now they're leaving their car at home and walking to the other areas. And it's really added that extra late afternoon and evening push that some of those retailers desire. So it's a, it's chasing the mix that works in the market.
Well, I, I guess we'll agree to disagree. I, I, I think, I think you make some good points, but what I, I guess what I'm asking is that, it, it, when I said it's not Bridge Park, like you say, people want Bridge Park and they want something else. And there's something else that I hear that, when we were changing the zoning for, so you could do this, one of the biggest things we heard is eliminating all that green space. I live right down the street in residential and the, and so on. And I think that, that anything you can do to eliminate cars, because that's the whole thing. You say you want people to work there, be able to walk to work, okay, from their apartment. Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, if they were under the building, you, we, I would rather see, as I said, you're going to have elevators anyway because you've got over three stories, so under the building, more green space, and, and, and make it that cozy residential environment that you just said you wanted, and, and, and instead of all this blacktop and buildings right up against the highway, you say so.
And, and we don't disagree, it's, it's a product of economics, and you look at the two adjacent office buildings, you know, we put underground parking, and staff knows this, we put underground parking, but the only way that worked is because the City of Dublin also invested in, in the economics of that deal working. And so here, unfortunately, costs are not going down, they're not leveling, they're going the opposite direction. So it becomes a challenge on how do you, how do you meet it? And quite frankly, it's really determined by the person who's going to rent it, right? I mean, we could all hope, and we're doing what we can, but they're going to choose if it's the right fit for them. And, and I think in your market, in this location and what's available, they will choose to, to live here. Those are all interesting comments, but we don't necessarily disagree economically. I think we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. All right. With no final questions, I'll turn the time over to the Commission for discussion. Mr. Supalak, could I have you start us off?
You can. Jim, Jeff, Liz, thank you for speaking. Generally, I'm going to say I applaud, I applaud, I, I, there was, there was two really major sticking points that, that last time you guys were here, at least, at least the way I saw it. One was, one was, we didn't have the context to feel like we could evaluate the project. One was, we didn't have the context to feel like we could evaluate the project. And you guys showed up with that in spades. Not only that, you embraced it earnestly, right? And started to really help design a compelling way forward in that regard. There's a lot of sensitivity in a wide variety of ways in all this. It is, given what you're, given the constraints, you're doing an admirable job trying to design it. I guess where I'm going is there's always the but to all those, right? The but is the second part of the heartburn and discomfort stemmed, I want to say, almost solely from the relationship of residential to the highway. And there was some, I'm going to say polite language about, you know, it's got to be done with a great deal of sensitivity and things like that. Forgive me for, and I might have been one of those who was articulating that. Of course, the building, the building relationship is still the same really relationship to I-270 that it was in the previous version. It's dead-facing I-270. There's still, I'm going to continue to articulate, I'm actually going to be even more adamant, I suppose, this time just because it's grown on me a little bit. And I've recognized, having driven it a number of times, that Dublin just doesn't have it, right? We do not have residential adjacent the highway. This whole corridor is a number of commercial, large-scale commercial buildings. It's a profound change going into Hilliard, going into Worthington. There is but, you know, even if you scour the entire map, our entire elbow, there are but one or two really, really fine tangential points where residential abuts the expressway. And it is, they are chucked full of trees, right? Chucked full of buffer. This is, this would be the exception to all that. And my personal discomfort is growing on that front alone. I'm not generally averse to residential in this area. I applaud, I think the effort to land residential here will do wonders. And I agree with you on the sequencing. You know, I mean, we've all seen grocery stores go in before the neighborhood is ready, and they don't survive because there's nobody in the neighborhood to buy from them. So I do think that sequencing, that series of dominoes is an appropriate sort of development. Bring the people, the rest will follow. I'm not even averse to, I'm going to say whatever we're calling it, Site Six or Site Seven. I'm not necessarily even averse to residential being on Site Seven. What I'm having still great discomfort with is residential abutting the highway, the expressway itself. I don't know what that means. I mean, you know, there's opportunity potentially to think through more of a mixed use. There's opportunity to, as my fellow commissioner started to point out, is it just, is it different gymnastics with the massing and the parking in order to expand that buffer more robustly? So it, you know, it isn't a residential building basically a couple of streets away from the expressway and literally just looking out their front, you know, their porch at it. Those, we all know these buildings, they do not, despite every effort you would have to make it otherwise, they will not age well, right? They just, they do not age well, right? They do not necessarily fetch a wealth of their, they're one of the least desirable spots that we would, any of us would choose to sort of live in to be adjacent to the expressway. So I'm going to, again, applaud, there is so much good here. There is so much good connection, there's so much good sensitivity about connecting the fabric and the parks and everything you're doing. I really even applaud your work relative to, you know, making it not a green blob on the, I'm going to say the, what is it? The flood side, and now it's a retention pond and a dog park, green recreation hill. All those moves, fantastic. The sort of drive aisle and treating it so it's a little more of a street scape, great. That building on the left adjacent the expressway is still sort of the major concern and heartburn I have. And, you know, that's, I suppose, given the rest of the context, the rest of the city, the rest of the elbow, and the fundamental lack of that, I'm still going to continue to have heartburn there.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. And I'm a little out of order this evening. I understand we have one public comment that's been received on the website, but does anyone else here for public comment on this particular item? Seeing none at this time, Ms. Roush, could I have you read that into the record?
Yes, so this is from Jerry Kosicki at 4313 Wind Outwoods Boulevard, Dublin, Ohio, 43016. The comment is, there is much to like about this, but the lack of covered parking seems to be a huge issue. Can you really call this a luxury apartment with just a parking lot?
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Final call for any public comment on this? Seeing, yes? Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Deb Allard.
Could you, could you please press the button to turn on the microphone? Thank you. Could you restate your name?
Hi, I'm Deb Allard, and I used to work at Quantum Health. And when Quantum went to Metro, one of the first emails we got was, if you want to move in that area, here's the complexes you can go to. I think there was like four or five complexes pretty much promoting themselves to the Quantum Health. You know, and you got Cardinal there. I mean, you've got a lot of corporate-type people that like might want to live in these. So I just thought I'd mention it, that I see the potential. And I do kind of agree about it being by the freeway. Would it have one of those stone walls up then, or are you just talking trees?
At this point in time, we don't know. A lot of that is actually controlled by the state, not the city?
Okay, I just thought I'd mention it because, you know, being an employee of a company, they really did promote living close to where you work.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening, and thank you for your comment. Ms. Roush, any other public comment received? Any final public comment from those in attendance this evening? Seeing none, Mr. Grimes, could I have you go next on deliberation?
Sure, thank you. I have a lot of the same heartburn on residential there up against the freeway. Although I do believe that there is a need and a demand probably for this product in that area. And I think this is a good way of pushing into that, bringing people in there, using the place more than an eight-to-five type of a thing. But I'm not quite sure that the architecture design is something that fits between the two buildings that are there or in the scheme of things. And I also have a problem with, you know, calling them a luxury when you've got parking lots with uncovered parking. You know, parking, yeah, that seems to be the rub. And certainly, if I worked in the area, I would want my car parked inside somewhere, even if I didn't use it for a month. I wouldn't want to be having it sitting outside somewhere if I'm paying for a luxury apartment. I like the park space. I like the way it's laid out and connected with the existing creek and accessing. But it just, the exterior of the structure doesn't seem to be exceptional. It seems more common to me. I think it needs a lot more work, and especially, you know, the visual aspect of it coming up and down the freeway. To see that in between the existing buildings, I don't know, it wouldn't, I don't think I would be one to say, gee, I'd like to live there. And maybe more can be done with the facades to try to make it more appealing and in fact have that luxury attraction. Gas line, electric lines, yeah, that's limiting, but just so much surface parking in that area. Massive amounts. I think that this could be a lot, a lot better. That's all I'd have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Schneer, could I have you go next?
There appears to be a theme, but I'll diverge in one aspect. I'm not bothered per se by residential in this area. We can't fight what I believe to be a permanent trend. So we can force more office, but there is less need for more offices. And we're not going to be unique in that changing marketplace of work from home or hybrid. So the use doesn't bother me. It's the density and the parking. I mean, we're all saying the parking. So if it were residential, a larger building that made some sort of a statement would be more appealing from I-270. And the design, as it's featured here, you know, do we want people to drive past and not notice it because it fits? Or do we want people to notice it because it's really outstanding? And, you know, in my eye, it's probably complementary to what else is there. But is that the standard we want is okay? And there's an opportunity with this being the first sort of residential, potentially the first residential development, to make it very special, which I don't quite see that it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Fishman.
Yeah, I agree with all my colleagues, and I agree with Mr. Tavalek, especially when he said you've done a commendable job in putting together what we expect. But I have nothing against residential in that area. And I drove up there today, and there's all those woods there and so on. And I've talked to several people that have, about this here. And I remember in 1977, when Banning and Pickett developed the Metro Center, and the huge, huge plus, there was a lot of objection to putting commercial there at that time. But sadly, I have to say, I was here then, okay? And, but the amount of green space and the difference, and that was really contemporary back then, kind of wooed the city and it got approved and they built it. I think that, as my colleague said, I think we need something really special there. I really don't want to see a blacktop. And I think that you call these luxury apartments, and I certainly wouldn't move into a luxury apartment that didn't have a garage, okay? Especially in a commercial area, and you hear about all the vandalism and so on. Also, there's probably, if the concept works, in my opinion, you're going to have people living there and they're going to walk to work, okay? Which, interestingly, I looked that up a couple of days ago to see the percentage. And I couldn't get it, it was different in different areas, of people who live, who rent these apartments and then happen to work in the adjacent office buildings. It's very low, as I'm sure you already know, okay? It isn't like this thing's going to be filled with people working in the Metro Center, but it doesn't happen. So you're still going to have cars, you're still, so that doesn't really solve that problem. What I would like to see, and my colleagues have mentioned, is that we do simultaneously, we do the apartments and the amenities, which are the restaurants and so on. And then I think that would draw people, or at least keep the people that are working in the buildings there. And that's what, that was sold to us when we changed this. That was the big thing. People can have 45 minutes for lunch, they can run out on foot, grab something and bring it back or eat there or whatever. And so that's what I'm interested in. And I really would like to see something really special because, as you know, as developers, and I have learned, that the next guy follows the first guy, okay? And so if this is spectacular, the next one will be spectacular. And I think we need a lot of green space. I think you've done a great job, seriously, in the way you've laid this out. I really do. I think, I looked at it today and I looked at it again, and boy, it really gave us what we asked for. But I really think we need more green space. We don't need buildings up against the highway. I did call my relative again, who lived in, I think I mentioned it last time, against the highway. And she reiterated that, she said she got used to the noise, but she only moved to that apartment because it was the cheapest place she could find when she first got married, you see. So because she hated being by the highway. But, so I think that's a real problem. But anyway, I think it's all been said, and really good luck to you. But I have nothing against residential. I just want to see something spectacular. I'd like to see the parking under the buildings and lots of green space and water and something that people go, wow. Because you're the first.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. I will conclude, and I'm going to kind of sum up and state my own opinion here. And I'm going to start with the middle three bullets that are presented on the screen right now. So looking at this just from an independent site plan with no relationship to the roadway, to I-270. If we look at this site layout, you guys have done a phenomenal job at utilizing a build envelope that has some very challenging components to it. The narrow-neck entry, the ditch, the easements for, well, pretty much everything. You guys have done a remarkable job. If I look at the mass and scale, you know, the multiple-story building, the different size of the buildings themselves, the A building and the B building, looks phenomenal. Four stories, great. If I look at the architectural character, I don't know if you've listened to previous discussions on this commission, but we've had a little heartburn on the wood-like product. This is the kind of Nietzschean utilization that I would entertain because it's a secondary material, because it's an accent material, the 80% of facade. And now I'm going to switch gears and go one and five. The community plan, obviously, 2018, that was before we had a global pandemic. And so things have changed a little bit. So I will be anxiously awaiting the Monday discussion with city council to see what their direction is. As you'll recall in the beginning of my remarks this evening, we're an administrative body, and we execute based on community plans that are passed by city council. And so I will be paying very close attention to see if they give us different direction to execute upon. But the community plan right now has a particular vision. And if we could find a way to either get the building higher, shift the density, the residential to the back, or the leg of that building, I think it's B that goes top-down, is that right? Yes. The leg of the building that faces I-270, make the area a mixed-use product. I know that we have plenty of office space. In fact, my company, one of our office buildings is right there in Metro Place. And in the four, we're on the third floor, three stories, does have parking underneath. There are probably a dozen people who go into that office building every day. So I'm familiar, you know, the world is shifting. That's in relation to the community plan. And then I'm going to go back and end on an applaud note. Mr. Suplack touched on the amount of detail that was brought back, the framework, and the way that you have put together all of the details of how this could look, how it could look with an overpass over I-270, how it could look with connection down to Blazer Parkway, how it could look with that very green open space Mr. Fishman talked about Dublin's green. It makes it so that we're really kind of anxious at what you would do to that lower parcel, the second parcel, because residential works there. Residential is not next to the freeway. So you heard a lot of the heartburn, I think was the phrase used, about putting residential to a freeway. In that second parcel, it's not an issue. If you look at parking, you have some very interesting angles drawn into that. I'm sure that there's a way to work parking as needed that doesn't increase the economics of, or doesn't decrease the economics of the proposal to make something, you know, really phenomenal. Overall, I think you're right, this is an absolutely challenging parcel. It has been on your books for a very, very absolutely challenging parcel. It has been on your books for a very, very long time. And we would love to say, yes, you know, everything's great, but we're looking at longevity of this particular area. And unfortunately, we are in that pendulum swing, away from having the need of major office to not as much driving need of major office. With those five items, I want to turn back over to the Commission just to make sure that there's nothing else that you want to put as bullet list for consideration this evening. And then I'll ask if you have any need for clarification or additional discussion from the Commission this evening. Do you have anything else, Mr. Russell, that you're really looking for from the Commission?
I would say not necessarily looking for. I think you've given us some really good feedback. And what we wanted to know is, if it is worth us advancing, trying to address some of those ongoing challenges that we have on the site. I think, as I said earlier, and you can tell by the renderings of the architecture, that's not completed architecture, you know, that we wouldn't just build that. It'll be something that is enhanced. And taking your comments and our own internal comments with our architects, I think that is something that we can accomplish, because that's a hallmark of the Pezzuti companies. We have always been the first, and the people who follow do look at what we've been able to do. And we usually fight the harder battle with you and Council to make sure it still works and functions economically. But I think we can meet those challenges. The one thing, and I'd like to say this, just kind of to address some of the comments, this is a changing environment, and it's been changing for a long time. And it's not just changing in terms of how we utilize offices. And I want to clarify, when I talk about a luxury apartment, it is because we put the money on where people sleep, not where their cars sleep. And at the end of the day, the demand that we're seeing is the comfort that they want in the finishes of their home, the amenities that they have, and it's their willingness to pay for that. It's not that this is, you know, we're building many mansions here. It is really meeting a market, which is very different. And, you know, I have a recent son graduate pays more rent than I've ever paid in a mortgage. His car was parked outside. He doesn't care because it's a different feeling for him. And so we're trying to find places where I may want to live, he may want to live, and they're very different. And so that is part of the challenge, too. How do you meet that demand? And there have been such changes. You know, I grew up living on an apartment by a highway. I know exactly what you're talking about. But that was a different type of construction than what we would be building here. And the evolution of noise, sound, you know, separation, glazing, it's a different world. And so, you know, we're trying to find a way to meet the demands, be that catalyst, do it in the right way, and have something that'll be an asset to the community, and be the one to just say, look, it did work there. So we're really just looking for enough head nods to say, hey, you want to see the next, you want to see us advance this project and address as much as we can the issues and comments that you made. So that's kind of what I'm looking for, is not, not, yes, we love it, it's done, because we know it's not, but enough to make us comfortable in spending the dollars to really dive deep and look at some of those things. Can we raise some of those buildings, you know, and it may come back, and, you know, maybe there's some ways to accomplish what you want, that we'll have to have some additional discussions with staff and say, well, are there ways that we can do more of a partnership to get some of those things done? You know, we're always willing to explore that as well. So, and we do appreciate your time in indulging us in a discussion that we think is really important for both the community and certainly for us.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. So to your earlier comment about, you know, do you have head nods, that sort of thing, I won't speak for my fellow commissioners, but I will speak for myself. I'm looking forward to that Monday night discussion from Council. And so I would probably hold my head non, but I would not offer a head shake at this point either, until I heard that conversation from the legislative body in the city. I don't know of anyone else.
I mean, I'll piggyback and generally, you know how it is, there are no absolutes. So, you know, take that with a grain of salt. I do think you guys are doing a phenomenal job, like leaning into all the things, right? Again, Rebecca said it well. Generally, you take this site out of the context, I mean, out of the context of the highway. There's a lot of really nice moves here. There's, this is a good product. It's right, you're going on the right track. So there's sensitivity we're definitely picking up on. My singular worry is, really stems with, you know, we don't have residential on the highway. It is, it is a hyper careful thing. You know, we can sit here and say, to the point of, I even verbatim, I think, said it in the history, it has to be done with sensitivity. And yet, the building came back pretty much facing, right, like, it might be even closer to the highway than it was, straight up. And so it's all going to stem on that. If you feel like you can confidently solve that, and there was a variety of different suggestions on that, i.e. putting mixed use over there, i.e. shoving, not shoving, excuse me, move, moving, right, mixing, thinking more holistically, if you do own all that land, you're, you know, y'all are still developers, and you can think through where those units fall instead of adjacent to the highway and that type of thing. But that's going to be, I think that's going to be a sticking point, is what it comes down to. And it's just, unfortunately, even if you tell us it's luxury, even if you tell us it's going to be top-notch, it's still just historically sort of inhumane to put, you know what I mean? You're walking out your balcony and staring at the highway, or that's your front door side. And it's kind of what we have at present.
Any other commissioners would you like to add to those comments? All right. Seeing no desire. Thank you very much for, Mr. Fishman, did you have?
I want to echo Mr. Tavolak, but I guess we used to say in Dublin, and please don't take this the wrong way, that if you can't build it so that it's an attribute to Dublin as well as you, then you got to build something else, you know? And I understand, you've talked about economics, probably I counted like eight times, you said, economics. And I understand what you're saying. You don't want to build it as a charity. And so therefore, but I think that we really need the parking under the buildings. We really need a lot of green space. We really need that wow. And I have no objection to residential, but maybe it shouldn't be there. Maybe, as Mr. Sobolak said, maybe it should be in the next phase. But whatever, I can't support it unless it, as I said, meets those standards. So thank you very much. But I agree with Mr. Tavolak. I think it's an incredible effort, I think, that you guys did, so.
Thank you, Paul, all for joining us this evening. All right. Moving on to our next item this evening, and I just noticed you printed these single-sided for me. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Bright Road Senior Housing and Healthcare Residence at 7315 and 7379 Sawmill Road, and a series of parcels on Bright Road, and PID 273 012 155 19115 CP, its concept plan. This application is a request for a review of a concept plan for a full-service 55 and over healthcare and housing community. The 21 and 1/2 acre site is located northeast of the roundabout of Emerald Parkway and Bright Road, and is zoned restricted suburban residential district, planned commerce district, and planned unit development district, northeast quad. Mr. Will, welcome this evening. I will turn time over to you.
Thank you very much. This is a review for the Bright Road Senior Housing Concept Plan. As a reminder, this is a first step in a three-step process. The concept plan is seeking suggestions and feedback on the development, character, and use. If the applicant decides to come back, they will, during the preliminary development plan stage, they will come back to the Commission. As you recall, this site is located in East Dublin, north of Bright Road, west of Sawmill Road, and east of Emerald Parkway, south of the Lifetime Fitness Building. The 22-acre site also includes roughly 3 and 1/2 acres of city-owned property. The community plan makes a recommendation for the future land uses of this site, preliminary neighborhood office and institutional. Additionally, they do recommend parks and open space in the northwest corner of the site. The Bright Road Special Area Plan provides further recommendations, seeking to strategize to preserve key natural features, encourage greater open space and pedestrian connections, protect and buffer existing residential areas, while maintaining expectation of high-quality development along Emerald Parkway. So as a reminder, the city has two ongoing traffic studies in the area, the I-270 Crossing and the Bright Road Improvements. Both came out of the Sawmill Corridor Study completed in 2019. Some case history, this first came to the Commission back in January 2020. The 22-acre site included a number of buildings spread out throughout the site with more surface parking and less open space. The Commission was generally supportive of the proposed senior housing and healthcare uses, but did have some concerns regarding the architectural style and massing and density, as well with the single-family homes that were proposed. Most recently, this case came back in November of 2021. They made a significant change by adding an 18-acre site southwest of the roundabout to this, and that included a number, an additional number of senior villas and senior living additions to that. The Commission was, expressed, again, more support for the senior living and assisted living pieces of it, but had reservations about the villas and flats. Additionally, they supported the open space around the stream corridor and expressed and encouraged to further pursue that. This is kind of a zoomed in of the 22-acre section. With the most recent concept plan for this month, they did remove the 18-acre section from the proposal, so focus back down to the 22-acre section here. Some additional changes between them in the northwest corner of the site, they are no longer proposing development at this time. The senior villas, which were proposed on the 22-acre site, are no longer proposed. They've replaced that with small-scale neighborhood office, similar in scale to the office buildings at the northwest of Sawmill and Bright Road. Additionally, the north, or sorry, southwest corner, northeast of the roundabout, they've kind of embellished that open space and increased the stormwater pond. They've also slightly shifted the three primary buildings south to provide a little more breathing room for the stream corridor, and replace the surface parking along Sawmill with a green buffer. So the applicant is proposing a primary entry, a boulevarded entry from Bright Road still. They've removed their access from Emerald Parkway, as they're no longer proposing development on that northwest corner currently. And they are continuing the existing shared drive from Sawmill, which is currently a right-in, right-out, which is shared with the office park northwest of Sawmill and Bright Road. They're also proposing 395 parking spaces, most of which are in partially underground below the institutional buildings. If this advances to a preliminary development plan, we would require a traffic impact study being The applicant is proposing roughly 15.1 acres, or 70% of the site continue with open space. Some prominent open space areas include the stream corridor, which bisects the site east-west. The northwest area, which is roughly 3.9 acres. The southwest area, which is five acres, includes stormwater ponds, wellness gardens, trails, seating areas. And in addition, a number of courtyards and greens in the spaces between the buildings, which are programmed with things like bocce ball and other recreational opportunities. So the applicant is proposing roughly 415,000 square feet of building area, 7,000 square feet of which are neighborhood office, 408 are institutional. The community plan makes a recommendation of 9,500 square feet of building area in the land use, in the neighborhood office institutional land use. In the office area that they're proposing, they're reaching a density of 5,600, which is below that 9,500 threshold. And their institutional use, though, is 20,000 square feet per acre, which is above the community plan's recommendation. However, they do have a lot coverage of 18% with their buildings, and a total lot coverage of 24% with building, surface parking, and other paved surfaces, which is considerably lower than other comparable uses in the city. So Building 1 here is centrally located. It is three stories above a partially below-grade parking structure. It is 129,000 square feet and would include 93 units. You can see here with the flat roof, clad in brick and glass mostly. Building 2, which would be attached to Building 1, is three to four stories, roughly 152,000 square feet or 107, independent living with assistance. This would also be serviced with an underground parking structure and some surface. The Building 3, which is closest to Sawmill, is two to three stories and would include memory care, assisted independent living, and adult daycare. It's 126,000 square feet with a mix of 100 units. This, again, is serviced by structured parking underneath and some surface convenience parking as well. A change from the last concept plan, they're proposing two small-scale office buildings along Bright Road, one on either side of the entry parkway. These are small, one-story buildings. You can see here from the rendering, a more traditional stone or brick and glass with a gabled roof. So some discussion questions for the commissioners tonight. Are you, is the Commission supportive of the proposed land uses? Is the proposed layout, including the distribution of buildings and open spaces, appropriate? Is the Commission supportive of the proposed building architecture and heights? And is the Commission supportive of the proposed circulation within the site, or if there's any other considerations you'd like to make? The applicant is here with us tonight. They also have a presentation they'd like to share with you, but I'm happy to answer any questions for you, and we do have a few public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Will. If it's okay with the Commission, I'd like to take questions for both the applicant and the Commission, sorry, and staff at the same time. And is it, Mr. Newcomb?
Yes.
Welcome. If you'd like to step up to the podium so you can present.
So we listened to the comments before. So we listened to the comments before. Residential was the concern. This is always meant to be a continuum of care community with three levels of care, plus respite care, which is adult daycare. But I think it got too complicated, so we reduced the 18 acres. And then the acreage next to Lifetime, I think that we, you know, it's kind of to-be-determined down the road. So I think, so we'd like to focus on these three buildings and the two out in the front. But I also don't think we did a great job explaining exactly what we were trying to do. So I put together an exhibit that I would like to go through. And if I can bear with me on that, then I think you'll have a better idea of what we're trying to accomplish, and we can go from there. So the first one is, okay, okay. So there's, so area number one, that is the memory care and on Sawmill. That's the memory care, assisted living, and respite care. Area number two is independent living with services. But the first floor, which you'll see on the next slide, that has, you know, a lot of services and activities spaces. Three is the administration, and it's also an activity space. So it's administration on the first floor, and then the top two floors are aerobics, fitness, and things like that. Four is independent living with less services. Five would be office buildings. Again, six, we'll have to see, I think, once, you know, once we do this part of the project, we can see what the demand is, and so we'll decide then. Seven is a wellness garden. Eight is the existing trees. And so there's a drone shot, so you can kind of see the eight trees along Emerald Parkway. Those are the trees that, I mean, they would still remain there. And so that, the top is seeing it from the roundabout. The other one is looking towards Emerald Parkway. So it's substantial trees. And we are saving, I think, 65. And we are saving, I think, 65% of the large trees throughout the project. So the next, next slide. So this is, so you can see where the memory care, which would be on Salma Road. And so this would be basically the section two. And these are, these are the services that would be in that area. If you look, if we start, we can also go over the outdoor activity spaces. So there's an outdoor pool, pickleball, bocce ball court and the things that you see there. Private dining, and as far as the indoor activity spaces, private dining. Salon spa, indoor pool, which I think is important for seniors. Dining venues, multiple dining venues. There's formal large ones plus several small lounges. Services, so this would be doctors' offices, dentist's offices, and the things you see there. Administration building. You would be warming kitchen, actually, that's not in that area, but and then you see the upper floors, you see the fitness, and that's what I was talking about in that center node. That's what would be in the, in the upper floors over there. So the next. So this is what I'm trying to accomplish. This, these are the larger communities on the left. And so I wanted to do a comparison so people could see when you have larger communities, what you get with larger communities and then what you get with single-level smaller communities. And so, and those are very nice communities, the single level to the right. But that is First Community at the very, the very top, so that's what they've just built. And so I also want your input on architecture. They have underground parking. The next three would be Friendship Village, similar concept. That's their new building, but you can see where their gardens are, and then the bottom is the villas that they have there. And we don't have any, I just put that out there because, again, they're full service. That's something I'm trying to do is offer multiple things. That's what I was trying to do before, it just, it turned into more of a residential feel, and so there was concern there, so that's why I pulled that out. But both Friendship Village and First Community have villas like that. But then you can see their walking paths. And so, and when you compare the walking paths to that Stone Oak in Hilliard, and that is, that is a very nice community that was built within the last five years and housing your living underneath that. And you can just see the difference between, you know, the walking paths for Stone Oak and all the concrete versus what you see of the larger communities. The, the gardens, I mean, you take the garden on the left versus the garden on the bottom of the right. And you see that pretty much across the board when you see these smaller communities versus the larger ones. Underground parking versus no parking. You know, I just happened to be driving by and there was a woman walking after she'd just parked, and you guys just talked about underground parking. So certainly with seniors, I think that's important. So the next, again, more comparisons, and I'll go through these pretty quickly because there's about six pages of this. So you can see the dining facilities, and so they're pretty elegant. There still is the formal on the left, you can see in the, in the middle there, but a lot of their dining is small dining, and it's modern, modern designs where you have more of the institutional component over there, which is large group dining. And again, these are new, these are not old communities. Next one. This is the unit finishes, this is the difference. And so you go on the left, what you have with, with the high-end communities. And, and again, they're, the, the top four are still high-end, they're, they're expensive. The bottom ones are not quite as high-end, but that's Stone Oak, housing your living. Avondale's on the very bottom to the right, and then Danbury is the one on the bottom. This has the pre-finished trim, which, you know, so that's, that's what's available. Next page. Probably the most important thing, I think, is, I mean, obviously, the, the facilities are important, the buildings are important, but this is all about being active. And so the average age at Friendship Village, two years ago when I went there, was 82 years old. And so this is, this is what 82-year-old, this is what they're doing. And so I'm trying to provide an environment that allows people to do this. And so it talks, it shows about the exterior spaces. Again, I just, I think that one is, is much better than the other. Next slide. This is the fitness facilities, so again, the comparison. I think indoor pools are very important, and I think it's good exercise for seniors. The only way you, you get those is by having larger communities, which is what you have on the left, and then that's what you have on the right. Smaller communities. Next. Again, events, participation, socialization, all these are really important. You can kind of see the, the difference between the projects. We can kind of move through this. Again, excursions. So these are the excursions, where when they go on excursions, I mean, they're very active. I mean, they're not just walking over to the church, which you have on the right, they're actually going there and they're doing things. And again, trying to provide the, the means for people to, to do the things that you're seeing on the, on the left. Next. Everything on the, everything on the left, this is, yeah, this is all, there's no comparison because they, they don't, they don't compare. There's, so I wanted to show the comparisons in the previous slides, but from this point forward, it's just what you're seeing. And just, so you can get a flavor of what's happening at these two larger communities. They just don't have these. So this is the, you know, if the top left, that's, that's the salon. I mean, it looks like you're at Easton, and so it's very high-end, and there's, you know, the spa. You can see, you know, on the right. I mean, that's why when I say more people, more people gives you this. You know, when you see all these people, you show up and instead of three people showing up to work out, you, you've got 15, 20. I mean, however many people are in that parking lot, they're just very active. Next, please. So staffing is critical. I think everyone knows if you don't have good staffing, you're not going to have success. When you have the large communities, you can have the staffing that they have. They have your private TV stations, online fitness. Their floor plans are larger. I mean, I think we need, we would still need smaller floor plans because I think we're trying to cater to all different price levels. But I, I mean, that's, I mean, they're the only ones that do this. Entry features outstanding. So next, talking about density. So I think we're, we're about 45%, I think, depending on whether, you know, I think you were counting maybe the other acreage across, you know, the creek by Lifetime. So when you look at what's existing, these are the projects that are currently in Dublin. And so we've tried, you know, tried, we've done a lot better than this. I mean, we're not shooting for that, but it's just to put things in perspective. You know, and those look, all look like they're 70, 80%. Next. These are, these are the ones that are near Dublin. And the top one is Stone Oak, that's, you can see that, I mean, it's a very nice community, but it's all concrete. They had very few balconies. But this is what you're typically seeing in other senior communities. All right, next. And this is a lot of coverage of what's next to us and kind of around us. So the top left is the office park right next to us. Then you have Kroger, you have Emorness and the adjacent offices and Lifetime. And then, I mean, Mount Carmel, I think that we do a better job than these people have done. And so we're really trying hard to, to have lots of walking paths and open space. And so you can kind of see what other people are doing. A little bit about the products that are out there and just how healthcare is changing. So this is a memory care, so this would be what we're proposing on Salma Road. The two to the left are existing projects that have been built in the last couple of years. And so if you, if you research memory care, there's what's called the greenhouse design, and they have, they deal with households and neighborhoods that are basically eight to 14 people per area. And then so, and they have living rooms and those people all live together. It's, it's completely different than the institutional, where they just used to jam a bunch of people down a hallway, and it was all about making money and what was efficient for, you know, for the, for the facility. And so that's changed a lot, but you can even see right now, especially the one on the bottom. I mean, that's got dead-end corridors, there's not very much common space. The blue is their outdoor space, which is very limited. If you look at what, what we are proposing is on the right. So you look at the common spaces that we have, it would be, you know, three. In this particular case, there's three 14-person neighborhoods. And so each neighborhood would have access to two, two memory gardens. The respite care is, is there in the front. And I think it's important because if you look at what people pay for memory care right now, high-end memory care, when it's all said and done, it's going to be $8,000 to $10,000 a month, which is substantial. So how many people can afford 8,000 to 10,000? There's a lot of people who can't. And so respite care is $100 a day. So if you look at that, that's, even if you did it every day, that would be $500 a week, times four would be 2,000. And so there's a lot of people that could use something like that when you have, you know, a loved one that, that has dementia, you know, Alzheimer's. Basically, it would be a very good option for a lot of people. So that's why we have that there. Next. These are two articles. One was in Dispatch, it's like it's February, about a year ago. And it's about a couple that moved to Dublin. And it is exactly what I'm talking about, the continuum of care. That is, I think it's critical that, because husbands and wives don't always have, need the same level of care. And when you do need different levels of care, if you're just at a single level, I mean, you separate the family, you separate the husband and wife. And that's a perfect example, they moved to Dublin Retirement Village specifically for that. Otherwise, after 64 years of marriage, you would have split them up. And so I think continuum of care is essential to a, you know, a high-quality senior housing project. And then it talks about alleviating loneliness and social, and basically socialization, which is really what all those pictures were. And they're just off Facebook, they show what these people are doing. It's just larger communities have more participation and socialization, and it is a big problem. So that's all I have. So this is Matt, the architect, he's going to talk a little bit.
Good evening. Matt Lowness with Orange Frog Design Group, 411 Meditation Lane, Columbus, Ohio. Thank you for being here and let us review our project with you guys. So I think it's kind of important for us now to kind of step back, being it has been such a long time since the first project came in, this middle. And look at where we were when it originally was presented to you guys, where we are now. So the first site plan you guys see up there, it is five buildings that are more spread out across the site. They are taller buildings between two and five stories. And with that, they do use structured parking, but we do have a lot of surface parking. And as everyone here, I believe, is familiar with the site, it's very, very nice site, a lot of trees, a lot of undulation. And this site, this plane didn't really do a whole lot to preserve that. And it didn't address the fabric, the neighborhood fabric to the west. So when this was presented, it, it did have good comments from the committee. It was prior to me being on this, but hearing and getting the, the write-up from it, we took the comments from the staff in the commission and started the next, the next step. So this project here had 581 beds when we started in late 2019, early 2020. Next slide, please. So this is, when I came on board, we looked at the idea of, instead of having multiple buildings, combine them together because as you age in place, if a family member is in a different care level and you have to go across parking lots, what have you, it does provide you with some ability to have injuries and what have you. So with that, if we could bring all the larger buildings to centrally located within the site, put it adjacent to a taller structure, which is Lifetime Fitness to the north, mask it from the residential smaller buildings to the west. This was kind of the first attempt of that in trying to create the full continuum of care, the full CCRC with the villas around it. So you have the villas where you leave your struc, your, your single-family home, you come into the community, you still have the ability for care, but you're in a villa. And then as you progress, you're, you're, you're the most healthful today in which you move in. As you progress through the care level, you would come into the larger buildings. So this was a, a site plan that we created to start working with the staff, getting comments back from them, looking at a completely different approach from the multiple buildings to one larger building. And it had positive comments, but also a lot of negative comments, one large. It still didn't address all the site amenities. So with that, next slide, please. We had the surveyor come out and we did a tree survey, and there's 1,000 trees on the site. But out of those 1,000 trees, there's only, not a whole lot that are that valuable trees. If you can look at some of the pictures there, you can see a lot of the dead trees sticking up. So out of that, there's roughly 180, 160, 180 trees that we saw that were valuable from the 12-inch caliper to 24-inch caliper. We've identified those trees with the civil engineer with the survey. And then we started the next step, which is the next slide, which was, okay, how can we create, one, the watershed, the, the last time we were in here in November, a lot of concerns with the watershed to the west. So with that, we knew that there was an issue with that prior to coming to that meeting. We had the civil engineer and we looked at ways of creating retention ponds would be an asset to the site, keeping the trees that are in the 12 to 24-inch diameter. And as Steve mentioned that, that we are roughly two-thirds of those being kept. And the smaller trees, those are also being kept, we just didn't identify those trees. But if you see how the ponds, the, the retention ponds are shaped, those are reserving, preserving the grove of trees that meet the 12 to 24-inch caliper. So this plan that you see in front of you had mid-400s or low 400s of beds. And it didn't meet the full intent of the current zoning, which is neighborhood, office and institutional. Being we had the, the villas, I, I think a lot of the committee members, commission members, they kind of thought that it, it was a residential feel more so than the neighborhood office and institutional. So what we're presenting to you today is the last one, and what Chris did well at, is we were strictly abiding by the current zoning in a sense of institutional neighborhood office. So the, the individual villas are gone. We still meet a CCRC intent, which is from independent living. You're, you're on your own, you can get assistance if you choose to, that's Building 1. But as you progress from the west to the east, the care level increases. So Building 1 is independent living. It can be with assistance if need be. Building 2 is independently with assistance, and that assistance could be very minor, could be, could be major. And then the last building along Salma Road is memory care on the first floor. Steve mentioned there's three neighborhoods of 14 each. We think that this model that we're doing is not innovative in the sense of it's been out there for a long time, but how we're presenting it with the community space and how you have different opportunities for outdoor activity for memory care, I think works well with the climate we're in with COVID, as well as changing the ability for them to have opportunities. Above that is assisted living. So with this site plan, what we've done, we've taken the comments from staff, the community, everyone. We have moved the large building to the south to get a larger distance from the stormwater protection area. We have eliminated all the, the villas to meet the current zoning. We've increased the site retention to make sure that we have more than ample site retention for the collection of water from our site. We also can't do anything from the east of our site coming through our site, but we're trying to catch, catch everything we can. The building also is, if you can skip to not the next slide, but the next slide. What we're trying to do, a comment was made with here, the previous meeting, and how the building was very dense, very large, how it reads. And we feel that it, it is large, but we feel that we're breaking that mass down. And the reason how, why we feel how we're doing that is by the courtyards and the offsets on the south side of the building. The red arrows are showing you where we're bringing in green to separate the building, to create that separation, but not lose the connection between the buildings because we feel it's a very positive attribute to this site to have the independent assist, independent with assistance as well as memory. The memory care is, is connected underground. The memory care is, is connected underground. So all buildings are still connected. All those arrows are basically trying to show you that we are trying to break up the mass in the building to be more sensitive to the surrounding environment. With, with that being said, the building to the north of us, we are not as tall as that building. If you're at the roundabout looking into the site, we have multiple groves of trees to break down the scale of the building, and that building is three stories on the west end of our site, which is roughly 750 feet away from any residential structure. And then on the Bright Road coming in, we have the office buildings that are appropriately scaled to the Office Park to the east, as well as creating a landscape buffer to soften that edge as you come down Bright Road into our development. The ponds help that separation, as well as we move the buildings back to create the ability for Bright Road to be widened, if it is able to be widened, you know, that's, that's a traffic study issue. But with that, if you can go up one slide. By doing structured parking underneath, we have 80% of our parking inside, very, we have convenience parking outside for guests and, you know, for residents that, a quick in and out. If you can see the white, the white is illustrating all of our open spaces, the red is illustrating the walking paths that we have here. And the walking paths are connected to Emerald Parkway, they're connected to Bright Road. So it's not that we are trying to make the building dense, we're not trying to make the building larger than it needs to be, we're taking the attributes that the site are giving us, and we're trying to now, this plan that you see here, we feel that we've refined all that, and we've tucked it away, we're using the, the amenities of the site to make our building look better, as well as make it more fit in with the community. And with that, we have walking paths all around the site. So it's more of a healing garden as well, with the, with the hospital to the south. We were at that meeting and they're talking about the outdoor gardens and walking and healing, and we have that. And we're trying to let that be shown in the property that the city owns, that Steve would like to acquire. We're not putting revenue-driven product on that. That land is remaining park, obviously our residents will benefit from that, but also the residents on the west side coming through the site will also benefit from that. So hopefully you guys feel that there's been strides, strides made and your comments made from the previous time we were here, and that any questions you may have or anything you need to be addressed, answered, we're happy to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Lones. Looking to the commission for questions only at this time, so questions from the commission for either staff or the applicant. All right, we do have some public comments, so let's read those into the record and then we'll open it up for anyone in attendance this evening.
Great, thank you. So there's four public comments that were provided prior to the meeting, they're all in front of you, but I'll read them out just for the record's sake. So the first is from Jenny Devantier, she is at 4136 Macduff Way in Dublin. "I like the plan so much better than the last iteration. This plan leaves the natural area along Emerald Parkway, I am thrilled." The second is from Melinda Tadaro at 7325 Macbeth Drive in Dublin. "I appreciate the changes the developer has made. I'm still concerned about traffic on Bright Road. A thought, even though the 18-acre additional development has been removed in the concept plan, the developer could come back at a later date with a plan for that lot, who knows?" The third is from Nan Still at 3888 Inverness Road in Dublin. She has three concerns. "First, the outdoor music venue, we would like to see this outdoor amenity eliminated. Sound travels even over several stories at close range. We already hear loud cars, mufflers on cars, and loud radios and stereo speakers with traffic on Bright Road. We already hear, hear loudspeakers and marching band from the Sciota High School, and we deserve better." The second concern is related to architectural design. "We are most concerned with what faces Bright Road. The traditional rendering in the current plan for two office buildings appears to address the situation since they are small and have high-pitched roofs that blend with the current architecture and surrounding buildings. This is particularly important for the adjacent residential areas. We hope to see this continuing commitment to this plan and design from the developer if the project goes forward. This could prove the intent to be a good neighbor." And the third concern is, "We are concerned about the overall increased traffic that will result from this project and what the city of Dublin intends to do with Bright Road. We are quite concerned about the amount of land the city will try to appropriate from the south side of Bright Road. Our decks are next to Bright Road, and we do not want a four-lane road just a few feet from our decks. We need something like a permanent wall to be constructed to offset the decrease in the residence condo property values." And then finally, is from Carl, goodness, Glidetish, Glidetish, at 7001 Grandy Cliffs Drive in Dublin. "I think this looks much better, still worried about the Bright Road entrance. No way that narrow section of road can handle any additional traffic. Is the developer going to pay for widening? Also, wanted to talk to you about landscaping. I am a biologist, a OV-CVN, which is a Ohio Certified Volunteer Naturalist, and a VPS, a Volunteer Pollinator Specialist. The last two programs are through OSU. You might remember that I kept bringing up landscaping for the Hopewell School project and was shot down since the landscaping was already designed and approved. I'm wondering if we can get ahead of this project and maybe have some input. Would be nice to see native trees and shrubs and flowers used. I'm sure the future residents would like the wildlife it would bring, and it would be great to have them help maintain some of the flower gardens, bird feeders, and bird boxes if they would like. I'd be happy to help, what do you think? Are we going to be stuck with the same old dismal landscaping like we have at Hopewell? Also, I know a number of communities in central Ohio are updating their ordinances to include more natural landscapes. Hilliard is one of them, I'm trying to reach out to see how they are doing. Any way to get Dublin to review any of our ordinances in is that zoning or some other entity in the city? And my apologies if I messed up anybody's names."
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Is anyone in attendance who would like to make public comment this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to deliberation from the commission at this time. Mr. Schneer, would you like to start us off this evening?
I will, and I'll actually make it brief. I think this is a great improvement. I appreciate, we appreciate the efforts you've put forth, and I, I would encourage you to move forward with this, so I'm supportive of it as, as it lies.
Mr. Fishman?
When I looked at my packet, it made me happy. I think you've done a commendable job, commendable. I only have one comment, and that is that I would like to make sure that this, all this new green space is put in the deed so that a future owner can't come back and claim hardship and want to change that to put a building there or something. I, I think you've done a fantastic job. I, I think that I have tremendous respect for you, listening to us and the neighbors and people. I know it was a challenge, I know you've worked really hard. I have nothing bad to say, which is unusual for me. And so, so I, I, I think it's really commendable. I was really thrilled when I saw the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Grimes?
Thank you. This is far superior plan, far superior use of the land, simpler project, the most important pieces are on here. And I think the, the use of the land is going to be a phenomenal fit for that area. And I think that the residents and the staff and the community will enjoy that for many years to come. So I'm, I'm very enthused with this project. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. And it appears we have received more public comment, so we're going to move forward with additional public comment before Mr. Supalack and I make our final remarks.
Thank you. Jerry Kosicki, 4313 Windout Woods Boulevard in Dublin. "This kind of facility is needed in this city. This version is much better than the previous one. The enhanced open space is good, and the structured parking under the building is a great feature. The buildings are large, but this kind of facility benefits from scale. The contemporary architecture seems appropriate. My biggest issue with this are the too-little office buildings. They have the wrong architecture entirely. Once the Mount Carmel site is developed, they will be out of place." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Mr. Supalack?
I'm going to concur with my fellow commissioners, you guys landed in a really good spot. I think you, I think you know it, I think your campus feels really, I mean, it, it feels generous and rich and, you know, not just, not just buildings where old people go, right? So kudos, however we got here, a lot of the sensitivity to even breaking up the mass, right, like working with, doing the gymnastics to make that work. And obviously, we, we always applaud and staff, you know, you've been working back and forth with staff, so we know it's a hairy issue with a site like this with all the trees and the really mature trees, and so we applaud the effort to sort of even weave the buildings and the landscape around it. I'm reading into it, I don't have all the data, but I think you landed one right square in the middle of the sort of, the main entry roundabout, right, even? So all those, all that nuance is, is lovely. It's a nice, a nice building. Off the cuff, there was part of me clamoring for more height towards Sawmill, but then, of course, I heard you unpack the, the sort of, right, that becomes a parking conundrum, and then all of a sudden, we end up with more surface. So there's this really fine balance of how much surface, how much parking, how much height. And I, I recognize you guys are doing it and can, can be on board with everything you have here. The, my only sort of concern in all of this is, I, you know, it's early, we just heard it in the last, the last commentary from Jerry, the architecture, and I know you got a couple different renderings, and I, it feels like, I think I know you've had a couple different sort of design, designers involved, but it's not, it's not landed. I think there's work to do there, obviously, and, and make it fit with everything. I, I might also add relative to those, those two buildings, those two office buildings, that they, they too can be rather special, there, you guys know you have a gateway there that you're creating, so whatever that gateway architecture can be, it should be. The only other thing I'll stipulate relative to all this is, I think, continue as you develop, continue to stay, stay mindful of a couple things. One, and I think you are relative to your, your design, I, early on, was worried that your site, the circulation was sort of, you know what I mean, really goofy, and there was a big up and over in the, in the sort of parcels at that time. I also advocated for, can you get a second out relative to crossing the stream and going through that other parcel? Obviously, if you're not developing that other parcel, it doesn't become a thing, but it, it seems as though you're still have that forethought that depending on if that develops, you can potentially consider bridging across and that, that type of thing. I might also add, you know, it's not, it's not yours, but at some point, that corner parcel might develop differently, and then, so that relationship and how that sort of groundwork goes, I think should be mindful of what if that gets redeveloped differently is, is all comes down to. And you guys are in large part, in large part there, but you know what I mean, just continue to stay mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supalack. I know that you heard it from the commission, and looking at the public comment, you heard it from the public as well. This is an iterative process, as I'm sure you're well aware. And hopefully, we all add some benefit, at least that's what our desire is, to that process. You heard from the, it looks like five public comments this evening, all different kinds of things. And one of them, the Bright Road connection is obviously a concern, but it's not really as much your concern as it is our concern. So I know that that's underway, and we are very sensitive to that as well. The other couple of items that I had, first of all, if I could ask staff to reach out to Mr. Ladidish, I think is how you said his name, so I'm going to go with the same pronunciation. We're always looking for opportunities for community members to get involved, and we're always looking to improve our code. So if we can look at native species and those trees and shrubs that would be more fitting for the area and provide some variety and some beautification, then I'm sure that not only this application, but other applications could benefit from that. Thank you. And for the record, the applicant did state that, that there was communication there, so thank you. I also think that this is just remarkable, you know? The items, it's a concept plan, so we're expecting Duplo blocks, not Lego blocks at this point in time. But the items of consideration, the view corridors and the articulation of the exterior of the, the building front, along those view corridors was very much appreciated. The convenience parking, as you call it, that underground parking, excuse me, the underground, major parking with the minor parking adjacent to the buildings. But those are all things that we sincerely appreciate because it helps us paint the picture of what this development's going to be. Finally, Mr. Supalack's call-out of that parcel that's not your parcel, that it butts your parcel. Because we're looking at the vision of what Dublin's going to become, we are considerate of the whole and not just these pockets of development. So we appreciate your looking at that, and it does look like you're considering that in some of the, the planning and those Duplo blocks that we're seeing on the screen. So all in all, I think that you're hearing a significant amount of altered discussion than you heard last time, and I certainly hope that you're appreciative and looking forward to welcoming you back for future meetings and welcoming this type of service into the community. Any final comments? Gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. We certainly hope that you have a safe drive, and we look forward to seeing you again. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the last item on our, I believe, last item on our agenda this evening, I didn't look, didn't see if you snuck one in there on me, is case three, shops at River Ridge, at parcel ID is 273-008269, 019, excuse me, 012910, and 012909, 21-189Z rezoning. This application is a request to rezone three parcels from Bridge Street District Commercial to Bridge Street District Sciota River Neighborhood. The 14 approximate acre site is located southeast of the roundabouts of Riverside Drive and West Dublin-Grenville Road. Ms. Martin, I will turn time over to you for our case presentation.
Wonderful. Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for a recommendation to city council for a standard district rezoning. The site is located within the Bridge Street District and is presently developed with a single-story shopping center, as well as two undeveloped parcels located southeast of the roundabout of Riverside Drive with West Dublin-Grenville Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone those parcels, which were originally zoned Bridge Street Corridor Commercial in 2012, when that was established. And then subsequently, the developer worked with the city in 2014 to rezone a significant portion of what is now Bridge Park, from Bridge Street District Commercial to a newly established Bridge Street District Sciota River Neighborhood. So that neighborhood district was customized in order to facilitate high-quality mixed-use development. And so the proposal before you this evening is a request to rezone these three parcels as, the two parcels, and then also zone a remnant right-of-way parcel that is teardrop-shaped. And that would be to the Sciota River Neighborhood District to be consistent with adjacent zoning to the north. So this request is in align with the community plan. The entirety of the Bridge Street District, the future land use is recommended as mixed-use urban core. Anytime a rezoning's under consideration, the community plan is Anytime a rezoning is under consideration, the community plan is a guiding document, as well as existing adjacent zoning. Proposed on the screen is the proposed zoning map, which you can see is consistent with the zoning to the north. So in review of the rezoning request, staff is making a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission that you all make a recommendation of approval to City Council this evening. Be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, our applicant is here as well. Donna Brogan.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. We'll go to the applicant first before we do commission questions. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Don Brogan. I'm with Crawford Hoying, 6640 Riverside Drive in Dublin. Yeah, so I just want to talk quickly on why we're here to pursue this rezoning. We really are just trying to get this property in alignment with Bridge Park so that the zoning matches, and the programming that you would see here is going to be similar to Bridge Park, I would, you know, as we pursue projects, and it just gives our investors confidence in investing their money in projects they think that will be successful and investing in hiring design consultants for new projects. And I did want to point out that if the, you're probably all familiar with the detention pond that sits below Wendy's, so that is no longer required with the Dublin, the new Dublin stormwater detention, or stormwater plan, so that is no longer needed. So that becomes available for new development. So, and that's really our intent for the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Brogan. Mr. Hunter, I noticed you joined as well. Welcome. Is there anything that you'd like to add to Mr. Brogan's comments?
No, I really just wanted to make sure that I was here in case I needed to answer any questions, and sorry I was late, but I had a meeting downtown that I just recently got home from.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. All right, looking to the commission for any questions for staff or the applicant at this time.
How about this, Nikki? Adjacencies, help us understand adjacencies and this shift, A, and then help us understand, I'm going to go to relative to those adjacencies, height potential based on these adjustments we're making and just how that sort of potentially steps down relative to those adjacencies.
Yes, the most beneficial piece of this rezoning request is actually that the uses are further restricted, and the type and quality and character of the development is further elevated under the Bridge Street District Scioto River Neighborhood District. Bridge Street District Commercial intended to preserve existing property owners' property rights. Many of the zonings along West Dublin Grandville Road were community commercial, which the Wendy's drive-through still retains that. And so, community commercial permits a gamut of uses, which Bridge Street District Commercial preserved in a more limited fashion, and those are things like auto vehicle sales, gas stations as a conditional use, car washes, and other somewhat undesirable facilities. So that's the, I guess, the biggest benefit of that. Of course, like you mentioned, certain building types are permitted in certain districts. This site would already be eligible to be developed or redeveloped in the future with Bridge Street District building types because it's already part of the Bridge Street District. We're not adding any additional acreage to the Bridge Street District.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
So I understand, I understand, they want to rezone the entire shopping center, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And with that rezoning, we can get the same type of buildings we have in Bridge Park now? Is that correct?
Yes, as well as more compatible uses that would further the city's strategic goals.
But we're going to change the type of the buildings, and they're going to be three-story buildings or similar to what we're used to in Bridge?
So Nikki, could you just break down the requested zoning type and what is allowed in that requested zoning?
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think the first and most important thing to highlight is that no development is proposed. The existing shopping center will be retained. We are simply, or the applicant is simply requesting and staff is recommending approval of a change to the zoning district. And so like Mr. Brogan had identified, it allows us to further higher-quality development should there be enough development pressure in the future to warrant development in this area. So it's very advantageous to both the city and the property owner to have a more robust zoning district, whereas Bridge Street District Commercial is the least restrictive and least creative zoning district. So it would permit structures that are not as high-quality as what's been developed to the north. So both the property owner and the city are really preserving the opportunity to have high-quality development where car dealerships and other types of uses could today be allowed.
So just to repeat it back to you, same building type, same building type, same heights, essentially, quality is more controlled, uses are more controlled.
Same building, same height is what? What's there now?
Yes.
So what's there now could be retained with no change. If it's redeveloped, it has to meet the elevated code.
But will the, yeah, but what's in the elevated code is, are they allowed to build what's in Bridge Park, for example?
Yes.
Like three-story buildings?
Yes.
So we could have, essentially, this shopping center could be replaced with eight apartment buildings?
It could also be replaced with eight apartment buildings today.
It's, the current zoning, the current zoning allows, and the new zoning allows the same, the same building height, the same.
The same thing it's zoned for now.
Right, right. So all, that's, it's apples to apples in that regard. The things that are potentially improving is the quality's getting more restrictive and better, and the, you said, and some of the uses are being restricted out of it, i.e., she keeps going to auto dealerships, for instance.
How about the density? When I went through this, I didn't understand that. The same density as we've got now?
Yep. Well, not as we have now, as it is eligible to have now.
Okay, okay. Can't do anything about that. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a great distinction, the eligibility.
But the eligibility is much denser than what's here now.
Correct. So this site was developed under a planned unit development.
More density there.
Not necessarily. They could redevelop it right now, and without any changes from this commission, without any changes from City Council, they could redevelop it more dense than it is today.
Okay.
Just with this, if we were to forward the request for, or the recommendation for approval of this change, it would be higher quality.
Okay. That's the only difference.
Yep.
And I mean, I think just to clarify, there, different zoning districts permit different building types.
Of course.
The mass-scale siting of those building types is going to be more consistent with the existing development pattern, whereas the Bridge Street District Commercial District allows things like large-format commercial buildings, which are going to be the most similar to pre-existing conditions like Lowe's.
So it can be different.
Right, right now, it can be different. It can be made to, what she's saying is it can be made to be an auto dealership, it can be made to be a Lowe's. And so this is.
This will restrict that?
Yes.
Okay, fine. I'm happy.
All right. Any further discussion?
Do you understand?
Has any public comment been submitted?
I read through this thing twice last night, and I thought, exactly what are we getting? Okay, I understand now. Okay.
Jenny, any public comment on this? All right, I will entertain a motion to recommend approval to City Council on the rezoning.
Can I, can I just articulate one thing? We didn't really, we didn't really comment aside from sort of debating on that, clarifying on that point. All I'm going to say is, we, this, and you guys know this as well as we do, this intersection is problematic, right? Lots of, lots of problems there. So just sensitivity moving forward, if you guys are developing a thing, just sensitivity to that and be mindful of that, and help us not create more accidents.
Well, I know one of our goals in development is not here would be to create a more pedestrian-friendly crossing.
Also lovely.
That would be, that would be.
Bless you. Yeah, also lovely.
And it's, it's not on the record, but Mr. Hunter was smiling during those comments of the pedestrian corridor. Gotcha. You're not masked. We're all masked here. We can hide our smiles.
And lastly, Ms. Call, if I may, just perhaps set Mr. Fishman's mind at ease, as well as anyone else who's held on and is still watching at home, this is an unusual, this is a request we don't get very much. We haven't had many rezonings from one Bridge Street District neighborhood type to another. But, and so you're used to seeing a lot more development-specific detail in applications because Bridge Street District, and it'll be the same, if this is rezoned, they'll have to come back with a concept plan, preliminary development plan, final development plan with any potential development that they ultimately would want to do. So this is just giving them and the city more to work with on this site to create a better development.
And finally, it's in alignment with the community plan. All right, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Grimes, thank you, Mr. Supalack, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Your fishman.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Mr. Brogan, Mr. Hunter, always good to see you. Drive carefully, and we certainly look forward to seeing you back next time on this application or another.
Thank you.
All right. Staff, do we have any communications for this evening?
Just a couple of quick things. So obviously, everybody noticing that Mayor Fox is no longer with us, so want to thank her for her time on the board. What did I say? Sorry. She's no longer with us. Sorry, sorry, sorry. On the commission. Yes, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. I hope she's watching and gets a kick out of that. Yes, my bad, sorry. No longer on the commission. She is still present with us on earth, yes. So, but again, thank you for her service to the commission, goodness sakes.
And it's Mayor Fox.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And then in terms of commission business, we have no cases that are eligible for your next meeting, so that February 3 meeting will be canceled. So if you didn't see that email come through, you shall tomorrow, so no meeting.
Sorry, Leo, I know you're counting on that one.
Yeah. Yeah, right, you could set up a special meeting just for you, so.
We're not going to have any of them.
Not February 3.
I have a communication. These new chairs, my back hurts. Pointing it out, and I very much walked in and admired the hunter-green couches that are still out there.
Yeah, okay, I'll share that up the food chain, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Are they in the back office? Can we roll them out for Planning and Zoning Commission?
With your own personal chairs.
All right, any communication from the commission back to staff?
Yes, I'm so unlucky on scheduling. I'm leaving town. I did it for the sixth because I wanted to make sure I was here for the first meeting. So I'm going to.
We just decided this week, so we haven't known about this for some time.
I'm going to be gone the whole month of February.
Okay, got it. So you'll be gone that second February meeting?
Yeah.
There's only one.
But, okay.
Yeah, you're only missing one.
I could have gone the first.
Sorry.
All right, and then just reiteration on Mr. Ladish reaching out for those plant types, but thank you, everybody. You know, we have a few open seats, so if you know of people who have the aptitude and the desire to serve in the community, have them reach out to City Council. I know that they're looking to fill a couple of seats. Ms. Fox's seat will be filled by a community member, just like one of us, and so again, always looking for talent and that community service.
Yeah, we will not have a representative from council, even though Chris Grooms will be the.
She is our liaison. She is our liaison, so.
So she'll watch it on stream or something, right? I don't think she'll be here.
She'll watch it on stream. She and I had a couple of discussions this last week, and I think we're in a really good position. So having that open communication and dialogue between council and the commission, making sure that we're acting as part of a whole, rather than independent entities, but toward the same goals, so.
Right.
Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you. I was just, wait, I was just really worried when I read that last night. I thought, if they don't come to.